Welcome to NWO Voices Dryden. I'm your host, Jack Dawson. In a moment, we will be bringing you the June 12th public meeting followed by the Committee of the Whole Meeting. The following video will show discussion around the development proposal of a two-story semi-detached building, which would be two dwelling units on each lot. Affordable housing is very much a key issue for much of Northwestern Ontario. The public meeting discussed zoning changes to accommodate this development. After the public meeting, we'll be bringing you Committee of the Whole Meeting, which took place later that evening. In this meeting, a few topics were covered, including renewable energy through sustainable economic development partnership presentation, a 35-year service award, revisions to waste and recycling collection routes, and community wellbeing program funding utilization. Committee finished with a look at amending the City of Dryden flag policy.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Proud, yes. This planning, this meeting is convened in pursuit to the provisions of Section 34 of the Planning Act, PSO 1990, as amended. Purpose of this meeting is to give the public an opportunity to make representation in respect of a proposed amendment to the City of Dryden's comprehensive zoning bylaw. Plus, that when members aren't speaking, that they turn their microphones off. Don't experience any feedback. I'd like to call for declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act with respect to the agenda for this meeting. Hearing none. To begin by acknowledging with respect that we are in Treaty III territory and that the land on which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe and the Métis people. The applicant tonight is Boreal Investments Incorporated. Welcome. And is located at 178, 180, 182, 184 Mary Avenue, Dryden. Landowner is Boreal Investments Inc. The purpose and effect of the proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaws is to rezone the four lots from residential type 1 to residential type 2, allow a semi-detached residential building on each of the currently vacant lots. I'll now ask the clerk to provide information on notice of passing of bylaws regarding this amendment.
Hey, anyone wishing further notice with respect to the passage of the proposed bylaw needs to make a written request to my attention. I need to provide notice of council's decision to all those who request that information within 15 days of the passing of the bylaw. If a person or public body does not make an oral submission at a public meeting or make written submissions to the council or the corporation of the City of Dryden before a bylaw is passed, that person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal, unless in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. If a person or public body would otherwise have an ability to appeal the decision of the City of Dryden to the Ontario Land Tribunal but does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions before the bylaw is passed, that person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision. One of the purposes of the Planning Act is to provide planning processes that are open, accessible, timely, and efficient. Accordingly, all written submissions, documents, correspondence, emails, and other communications, including your name and address, form part of the public record and will be disclosed or made available by the city to anyone that the city deems appropriate. And in providing such information, members of the public shall be deemed to have consented to its use and disclosure as part of the planning process. Anyone entitled may appeal this council's decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal by filing it with myself within 20 days of the notice of decision. A notice of appeal must set out the objection to the decision and the reasons in support of the objection accompanied by the required fee.
Thank you. We're now at confirmation of notice of public meeting. I'll now ask the clerk to provide information on the notices regarding this public meeting.
Hey, notice of public meeting was given on May 15, 2023 by postings on the City of Dryden website and Facebook page and was also provided on the agenda of the May 23 council meeting. Additionally, letters and the public notice were provided to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property.
Thank you, and our meeting procedures, and I'll ask the clerk to explain the procedures for this meeting.
Thank you. The procedures will be as follows. The city's junior planner, Mr. Metta, will present a report on the amendment application, followed by a presentation of any correspondence received regarding the application, any comments from the applicant, and then by members of the public who want to provide comments in support of or opposition to the application. Members of the public who have pre-registered, and I don't believe there are any of them. Okay, blah, 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 will raise their virtual hands. Members of the public who are in attendance, and I don't see any of them, will go next. And then we ask anybody making oral presentations to identify themselves prior to the presentations. And speakers will be requested to introduce new and critical material only, so there's not a repetition of points. And speakers will be asked to address their comments to the chair.
Thank you. Our presentation of staff, and I'll invite Mr. Metta, the city's junior planner, to present his staff report.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to present the zoning bylaw amendment application for 178, 180, 182, and 184 Mary Avenue. A zoning bylaw amendment application was submitted for the subject lands being lots 82 to 85, Plan M 720 in the City of Dryden, also known as 178, 180, 182, and 184 Mary Avenue. The subject lands are shown in Figure 1, and the subject lands are proposed to be rezoned from residential type 1 zone to residential type 2 or R2 zone to permit a semi-detached residential building on each lot. The proposed development includes a two-story semi-detached building, which by definition will contain two dwelling units on each lot, with two bedrooms in each unit. The main access to the subject lands will be provided from Mary Avenue. All the buildings will be serviced with municipal water and sanitary services. The proposed site plan drawing is shown on Figure 2, and the proposed elevation drawings, floor plans are shown on Figure 3. Provincial policy statement. The PPS 2020 is a document that guides development in the province. In the context of PPS, the subject lands are located within a settlement area. Settlement areas shall be the focus of growth and development, and their vitality and regeneration shall be promoted. The new development proposed will generate additional housing units through this application. The new development is also in line with the recently introduced Bill 23, More Homes Built Faster Act 2022, which supports housing intensification. City of Dryden official plan. The subject lands are located within the stable areas designation of the official plan. Acceptable uses include residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional uses that presently exist in the city. The designation of the lands as stable areas indicates that there will be little change in the areas over the lifetime of this plan. Section 3.2.5 and 4.1.3 of the official plan encourages housing primarily in the urban serviced areas of the city and to encourage intensification and infill development where adequate services such as water supply, sanitary sewage, stormwater management, and drainage. Schools and parkland are available, and commercial and community facilities are accessible. Section 4.1.5 of the official plan allows for minor changes to the land use that are compatible with existing land uses and do not result in significant increases to traffic or noise and are similar in scale to the surrounding built form that improve the quality of life for the area residents, and this shall be permitted through an amendment to the zoning bylaw. The proposed use of the property is to build a semi-detached residential building and is compatible with the neighboring land uses. It is not expected that there will be substantial or unusual increase to traffic or noise resulting from the change in the land use designation. Section 4.2.1 encourages occurrence of new residential developments in the residential development areas of the city on full municipal services. The use of the property to build a semi-detached residential building supports the objectives of the official plan. City of Dryden zoning bylaw. The subject properties are located within the residential type 1 zone. The permitted uses within the R1 zone are included in Section 4.1.1 of the zoning bylaw. There is no existing use of the land and is currently vacant. The zoning bylaw amendment application proposes the subject property to be rezoned to residential type 2, and the permitted uses within the R2 zone are provided in the Section 4.2.1 of the zoning bylaw. A review of the zoning zone standards for the R2 zone is included in Table 2. This review is based on details provided in the ZBA application and supporting documentation. Notice provisions. Notice of the public hearing was provided by city staff in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act. As of this, as of date, this report, staff have received one comment from the property owner of 181 Mary Street deciding within the 120 meters notice radius. The property owner asked a question related to the type of tenants that the developers are targeted to or marketing to, and the developer has confirmed that they would be targeting the market-level tenant market, but on the affordable side as much as possible. Our recommendation that the council receives the staff report dated June 5, 2023, and in conjunction with the comments and feedback received during today's statutory public meeting. And if during this public meeting, no questions or adversarial comments are received, council may elect to proceed directly to a decision at the next regular council meeting on June 26, 2023, or can elect to request a recommendation report to be provided. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now ask the clerk to identify any correspondence that was received with regard to this meeting and the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you. I have received no correspondence from the public, and as Drew mentioned, they just received the one in the Building and Planning Office. So that is all that was received.
Hey, thank you. And the next section is comments from the public. I will ask the clerk to run this portion of the meeting, and to be short.
Okay, so there's no public in attendance, online, or in person. I'll just ask the proponent if he has any comments he would like to make at this time, and go from there.
Well, thank you very much. This is Jack Steenhoff speaking, and thank you for today, or this afternoon late, for hearing this application. And as Mr. Metta explained and articulated, I think that really captured it succinctly. And the, the, the goal here is to provide some housing that is much needed. And moving forward for this application from an R1 to an R2 zoning is really assisting and helping bring some of the costs down. As we've all noticed and experienced, the costs of materials and trades are up. And although it may seem, you know, maybe rather insignificant in the, in the large scale of the cost of the home, every little bit helps. And the other thought was just going with the, this semi-detached type of housing unit. It really will look in character because we have larger setbacks from the property lines. So it, I believe we're trying to have a, an elevation on the home that's going to read well from the street and yet give a little bit of space between property lines. And I believe you had the figure there, but the, you know, we're about 20 feet distance between the homes, so that'll yield places for snow and other things to, cars parking and so forth. But I do thank you, and that's really, I have to say, for my comment, and just appreciate so much that you would listen to this tonight. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for those comments. Appreciate that. And I'll now ask members of council, if they have any remarks or questions concerning this application and provide direction of its disposition. Oh, Mr. Latham.
The only, I'm in support of the project, but the only question I, I have, is there any places like this in Dryden now, or is this the first?
So through the chair, we do have a lot of semi-detached homes in the community. Not, there are a few that are two-story. A lot of them are single-story with full basements, but semi-detached is not an uncommon building type in our community.
Counselor McKinnon.
I fully support these, these bills, and I see no reason why we wouldn't bring this council to me.
No comment. Okay, I'm seeing a nod in the head though, so a thumbs up from Counselor Keating. So yes, let's move this forward to our next council meeting. Very good. Okay, I think that kind of concludes the session. Adjournment, so I'll now ask the clerk to ask two members of the council to move in second the adjournment motion.
Thank you, Councilors Latham and McKinnon. Moved by Counselor Latham, seconded by Counselor McKinnon, that this meeting be declared adjourned.
Thank you. All, all's in favor? Carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Welcome, everyone. I now call the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Monday, June 12, 2023, to order and ask that you turn your cellphones off for the duration of the meeting. I will remind everyone to turn their microphones off when they're not speaking so we don't experience any feedback. I would like to call for declarations of pecuniary interest and the general, and the general nature thereof under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act with respect to the agenda for this meeting. Hearing none. We'll move on. I would like to begin by acknowledging with respect that we are in Treaty III territory and that the land on which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe and the Métis people. So we have one delegation this evening, and I invite Mr. Pinta and Mr. Elo to address council, please.
There. Okay, everybody can hear me okay. All right, terrific. Thank you. Thank you for, for having us. I like to begin first with our, our land acknowledgement as well, that we have prepared. We wish to acknowledge the fact that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe and the Métis people of Treaty III. The Anishinaabe are the original caretakers of this land and called this place "Pawee di Gong", meaning place of the rapids, which is now, now known as Dryden. This land is important to the people of Migisi, Shaigon, Eagle Lake First Nation, Wabigoni, Saaga Igon, the Wabigun Lake Ojibwe Nation, as well as the Métis people of the area and the residents of Dryden. We are grateful and happy to share this land that we love, where we live, work, and play. And thank you for hosting us and the warm welcome. Niuech kitos. Thank you. So with that, what, what I like to really start with, and this is not in our slides, is that we've identified Dryden and the Patricia area as, as a, as a really good opportunity for some bioenergy initiatives that can be the basis for collaboration with, with the municipalities, First Nations, industry. And that we have, we've had some discussions with both, with, with First Nations and industry already, and they're all very excited about the potential that we see also in this area. And when I say "we", I'm talking about Finnish industry, Finnish government, Finnish technology, investment, and participation in the area. So that's kind of the backdrop of, of everything that we have here. And what I, what I would like to do is, in the interest of time, kind of zip through some of these slides. The, the contents will be, will be provided and made available to, to everybody in the council. And we'll, we'll kind of go through, go through this and highlight on a few areas. And we'll have, we'll be happy to have some conversation and dialogue with, with all of you after this. So first, meeting our leadership team. Two of these faces are here in the same room with you right now. Myself, Vasi Pinta, and my colleague Arielo. I am, I've been representing Finnish companies the last few years in the area, geotechnical services and environmental monitoring systems, as well as expertise in deep geological repositories for, for nuclear storage. The company that I represent designed the first of its kind in Finland, the Onkala repository. And, and through all that involvement, I got approached by the Finnish government to see if I'd be willing to rep Finland officially in Thunder Bay in Northwestern Ontario. And it took me about a second and a half of thinking about that, saying, yes, I'd be pleased to do so. So that what brings me in, in that official capacity as well. So I bring official greetings from, from Finland as well. And again, the, the very much stated interest in this area and the opportunity that we see here for, for bio, bioenergy and bioeconomy opportunity for multiple different kinds of projects potentially. Other members of our leadership team are in Finland, Dr. Sikonen and Markus Hirvonen. And, and through us, we have a, a big network of expertise as well as contacts in Finnish government, Finnish investment, and Finnish technology. A little bit about us, we have decades of combined experience in the field. We see, again, opportunities in Canada's northern and remote communities, including First Nations and municipalities, with, with opportunities that are in, in bioeconomy, subsectors that include bioenergy and renewable fuels and gases, local food production, and biohealth. And we're passionate about all of this stuff. Innovative solutions coming up with a consortium, setting out on a joint mission and a goal for creating a better future for our planet and future generations, and doing that profitably. These are kind of in a nutshell what we see in this area in particular. And the next slide, please. Vision and mission. Our, our vision really is to, is to enable the success of people and communities for, for developing sustainable initiatives and solutions using, using bioeconomy to the provision of world-leading experts, resources, and technologies. And that's what we bring to bear, as well as investment in that. And, and we want to bring, bring profitable solutions for that, that makes sense, that check all the boxes. And, and also the, the promotion of social and environmental responsibility through it all. It's not just mainstream right now in, in the world, but it's just the right, right thing to do. And, and I think the time is ripe for, for realizing some of these potentials that we have here. Our values: sustainability, ethical conduct, impact, innovation, transparency. We are really, the integrity in Finnish, Finland is the least corrupt country in the world. And we, we wear that on our sleeve. We, we live that value, so that reflects on everything that we do. Our services. We, we provide an evidence-based assessed pathway to qualified and quantified bioeconomy potential. And, and the realization of that, that includes the, the best use of available resources and, and the raw materials for that. And later on, we talk about waste to value. And we, we see an opportunity in biomass, in particular, in here, that, that could be, could be a great thing for the area. We want to see a transition towards more sustainable and environmentally friendly economy and lower carbon emissions and a more efficient use of natural resources. And what we really want to see is, is where, where waste is no longer seen as a problem, but, but a solution of, of getting more, more out of, of our, of our surroundings in a way that is sustainable. Next slide. And our focus areas. In general, bioenergy solutions, district heating systems. We'll have an example a little bit down in the slides. Other renewable energy solutions such as solar and wind, biofuels, biogases, utilization of waste heat also for sustainable food production. So greenhouses, for example, that are heated. Affordable housing, eco-village concept that we'll, we'll show a little bit more with the slides that follow. And really developing sustainable value chains in, in Hall. Our network of expertise, we say, we see opportunities for, next slide, please. Forest biomass, renewable energy, biofuels again, national grid injection, for example, green methane. We can, we can inject that into the Enbridge pipeline that goes right through and provide green alternatives to that, and green augmentation of the fossil fuels that go in a natural gas format. Affordable housing again, and then carbon capture and biochar production, for example. And again, the nuclear waste, our permanent storage is also in our wheelhouse. Our value networks also include the societal effects. So good jobs for people, local income, and complementary business that, that complements the, the core industry. And inclusion and capacity building as well. So when people have, have jobs and are happy with their lives and have a purpose, other societal problems tend to be less as well. Just for some comparison, current bioeconomy projects in Finland, there is 26 hydrogen economy projects in progress in Finland at various stages. And that represents over $20 billion equivalent Canadian dollar investment right now. The Finland, two-thirds of, of Lady Finland that floats there without its one arm and head represents about 5 million or so people that live in that area. So that's in sort of juxtaposition and comparison of, of Northern Ontario. But shows kind of the kinds of projects that are in progress there right now, that some of them could be, could be a template or an, or an similar opportunity here as well. So the next slide and the pop-up kind of shows, it's a bit of an eye test chart, but this is those 26 projects in deeper detail. And they, they range in size from a small of 5 million euros down to 4 billion euros. And the sweet spot in the middle there is, is anywhere between about 90 and 150 million euros. So converting that to Canadian dollars, those would be, you know, typical types of projects that could be realized in this area as well. Areas of opportunities in Dryden in particular, renewable energy, very much aligned with, with our focus areas. Biomass, solar, wind, primary and secondary industries, value-added wood products, bioenergy and biofuels, local food production, again, regional tourism, people who want to flock and see where things are done in a, in a way that contributes to the circular economy. Affordable housing, that eco-village that I'll, I promise we'll talk a bit more here. And again, that nuclear waste management. So there's this alignment with the opportunities that we see, see in this area. Waste to value. Little, little drive in Northwestern Ontario, you'll see a lot of the slash piles. That's, that's a lot of biomass, a lot of energy there that could, that could be used in other things that, that Finland has done through the, through the decades already. The, the leftmost chart there is an actual district heating system that's getting installed in Northwestern Ontario right now in, in a, in a location that we, we can't publicly announce yet, but it's, it's in progress of getting installed. Biofuel refinery, one of them in Finland, as well as, again, greenhouses type of thing. And this, this waste to value can also be, for example, the, the bark and the chip pile back of the mill there and utilizing the biomass that's there. And also at the same time, getting rid of a bit of an environmental liability and turning that into an asset. The eco-village. The concept is simply a self-contained planned community that is district heated, provides its own power, and its, its own services. and its own services and electricity and has a wide range of housing that covers everything from social assisted housing to market price and everything in between. And studies in Finland have shown that the dollars spent in these planned communities, they circulate through the local community 11 times before they go outside. So multiple benefits out of a concept like that. And built completely from modular housing units, so they can peak to meet the demand. For example, similar thing that we see the potential here in Dryden with the growth of mining and the potential of more people coming in for the long-term project with the deep underground repository, where you need to grow that, the capacity for a certain period of time till it shrinks down again, but still has some size at the end of it. So next steps, what we do. Next slide, please. Our process, relief introduction, building a roadmap to success with partners. Partners that would include the municipality, the city, First Nations, industry, funders, both here federally, provincially, municipally, as well as the equivalent in Finland and Finnish business development agencies and technology. Pre-feasibility, structured development, so kind of mapping everything that needs to be mapped out in detail, developing a preliminary plan that's vetted with all the stakeholders, owners, the custodians of the land, if you will, the whole set of people and organizations involved with the project. And then the full feasibility based on that roadmap and that pre-feasibility that's built, that would then form the basis of a solid business plan that would then be used to actually execute a specific project that the consortium or the group of organizations would then collaborate and see to completion. So that's us, myself and Ari, our contact information. And I think that takes us to the end. So the last slide there says you'll get to learn a new word, which is kito in Finnish, which is the same as miguech, and thank you. Thank you very much. I think I went a little bit over my, I think, 10 minutes, so I apologize for that. But happy to get any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions right away? Counselor McKinnon, go ahead.
So you said you've got one of these developing in northwestern Ontario already. Did you go through this whole process with that organization to, including municipality and all works?
That particular project was smaller in scope and more limited to a district heating system. So the engagement, while it was comprehensive, and Ari, you can probably talk about that a bit more, was focused specifically on district heating only. So Ari, if you want to.
So this project specifically is a northwestern project that is implemented right now. And it is a small community, growing, small growing progressive First Nation community that is building houses. And we assessed, we did actually eight different models. This is the selected community map that how they decided to run the district heating plan. But this is actually a live plan that will be implemented over the summer months and will be hitting the community housing over the winter, first winter. And what we did is we did eight different options, but because how the Finnish experts assess it, it's ideally is one megawatt per meter of pipe laid. And this is the highest, it was 0.67 megawatt hours per meter. So because it's very expensive to lay pipe on the ground. So that's how we assessed it and it gives the best, shortest return on investment and the best possible feedback for the community. It's going to hit their community center, their health center, their elders' housing and new subdivision of buildings. So this is, like we said, it's a live project. And I've worked, I used to be a trade commissioner from Finland from 2010 to 2015. And during that time, I found out that there's so many opportunities and so many similarities and synergies between Finland and northern Ontario. So continued on that path and has worked in the region. Just finished a large assessment last week of Fednor-funded project for another other community that will be installing district heating in their system. And in addition to Vasi, so our presentation, why we wanted to present you is because we've assessed that Dryden and the region has a great opportunity to be a flagship case for district heating assessment. And the reason why we are here is we are asking you to consider being the host of bioeconomy concept development in here and a project. We are not asking any money from you. We are just asking you to allow us to bring our expertise and experience into the community and see if we can together work something that makes a difference in this community.
Thank you. Counselor Noel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that informative session there and sticking to the time limit as well. You're the best that I've been partying to anyway since I've been on council. Now, your theory of a bioeconomy, I believe you talked about, is very easy to follow, especially with the slash pile for those of us living up here. But gentlemen, can you tell me how a deep geological repository is congruent with bioeconomy? How are we going to benefit from waste that we're storing for hundreds and hundreds or thousands of years? How is that congruent with what you're talking about with slash piles and renewable things and the bark pile? I get those, I don't understand that.
Well, it's just another set of expertise that we can tap into that Finland has done first and is an expert in the world. Not making any value statements about whether it is the right or the wrong thing and, you know, what to do with nuclear fuel or whether to have nuclear power at all. It's just a practical way of dealing with the waste that Finland has come to the conclusion that that makes the most sense and it's the safest way to do that. And the company that I represent has the engineering resources that were used for the planning of that repository and the completion of that facility over the last 20 years. It's kind of similar to oil and gas as well. Oil and gas does its own thing out, you know, mainly in Alberta, the western provinces and some on the east coast as well. And, you know, it continues to run on its own course and, you know, independent of what we may or may not do with bioeconomy. Same thing with Ontario's power generation is mostly nuclear. So this is a way to deal with the waste that comes from that. They're not, you know, they're not mutually exclusive. They just happen to both be needed and we have the know-how to handle both.
Just a follow-up, I want to be clear. Are you telling me that in Finland, there's a DGR that's actually storing nuclear waste as we speak here today?
The construction of that deep repository is essentially completed. And the next phase is to move the nuclear fuel that, similar to Canada, are being stored right beside the reactors in those same buildings. And they're going to be moved down into that deep geological repository. That's the phase that they are in. It was a 20-plus-year project to do the testing and the design and the actual construction of it. And really, the next phase now is to move that fuel down on the ground into that facility.
Any other question? Mayor Harrison, go ahead.
Through the chair, thank you for your presentation. Very interesting. And I know Finland is a world leader in use of biomaterial and bioeconomy. So learn a lot from what your country has to offer as far as the technology for sure. Seems like the bioeconomy has been, it's kind of percolating in our area for a long time, but it definitely needs like a vehicle to bring some impetus into our area. So appreciate your interest, Finnish interest into our region. And I guess let us know what the next steps might be if you're looking for us to be a host for this.
You bet. There's, it's a consortium of multiple partners. And again, that includes First Nations, industry. And it's putting together that coalition of the willing and then charting a roadmap, building a common roadmap that everybody can support and get behind. And the beauty about following our methodology, it checks all the boxes for not only funders and supporters and investors here domestically in Canada at all levels of government, but also the same thing across the pond in Finland with Finnish business development and Finnish government and technology and investment and the desire to do more business this side of the pond. Things are kind of topsy-turvy in Europe right now with the war being waged there. And things have been rearranged in a big way, including on who and what Finland has traded with. Finland became a full member of NATO this past April 4th. And Finland wants to do more, more here as well and in terms of trade and commerce and sharing of knowledge and skills and abilities. So looking forward to working more on that.
I have a question. So just curious, because the DGR isn't necessarily full steam ahead here. We as a municipality have no say on whether it is here for sure or isn't. So my question is, would your group, Finapool, is it Norabest?
Norabest, yeah.
Or the Finnish government still be interested in our area's development if the DGR was off the table?
Oh, for sure. Finland does not have any naturally occurring coal or natural gas or oil. So Finland has relied for a very long time on biomass. And so those skills and those capabilities are still very much there. If there's, you know, more things that are happening in this area, then, you know, it's just more skills and more technology than, and understanding that can be brought to bear. But it doesn't exclude the bioeconomy potential at all, no.
In addition to, also the fact that Finland is looking into small-scale nuclear with various international partners. So it's just an addition. And we thought that since the discussion and the focus is here on the depository, we added as a line item into the presentation that it's an additional opportunity. But that's like Vasi said, that, you know, probably it's not going to take 20, 25 years like in Finland to replicate it, but it's a long process.
Thank you. Kito's?
Olehira, that means you're welcome.
Perfect. The only other Finnish word I know is sisu.
And that's a good one.
That is a good one.
Determinism, perseverance.
Yes, absolutely. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Move that around. And you are free to leave. Actually, could you press the button? I'm getting too much feedback over here. Thank you. You are free to leave. We do have probably another hour and a bit before us. But if you would like to stay, you are totally welcome to, but it just might not be super interesting. Thank you. Excellent. So I'm going to keep going. We have one presentation this evening and I get to do it, which is great. So, Darrell, you're here. I get to talk about Darrell for the next 45 minutes. Just kidding, just kidding. So I, we are presenting Darrell with his 35 years of service award envelope today. So Darrell began his employment with the city of Dryden on June 20th, 1988, six months before I was born, as a casual laborer in the public works department. He then had, so sorry, I didn't, that didn't mean to like sting or anything. I just, I was like, oh, interesting. Oh, gosh. He then had two temporary postings at the airport, but the majority of his employment had been spent in the public works department, working his way up through the years in various positions, starting as a casual laborer, then recycling plant laborer, bus driver, light equipment operator, heavy equipment operator, lead hand, infrastructure lead hand, public works operations foreman, and finally, as the public works operation manager, the position he is in today. Darrell, on behalf of the city, we would like to congratulate you for achieving this milestone with us. We know you have worked hard for this accomplishment and we truly appreciate your dedication to the organization and the residents of the city of Dryden. You are a valuable member of our team and we wish you continued success. And I have a little thing for you, you can come get it whenever you'd like. But I would also like to ask Blake, if Mr. Poole, if you would like to add anything. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you put me on the spot, but Darrell is the heart and soul of Public Works here for a long time. And we're worried that he may be retiring sometime soon, but you never know with him. He's a busy fellow. But he's well-respected at Public Works by all the employees. And I've enjoyed working side by side with him for the last 25 years. The additional 10, well, he's did a lot. He can tell his stories about those days as well. But no, like I said, he's the heart and soul of Public Works. And I'm really glad he's still, he's still here and still kicking and still willing to work with the city of Dryden. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Oh, yay! We will pause for a brief photo. Oh, thank you and congratulations again. Yeah. Beautiful. Okay, so we have one public notice, which I'll ask the clerk to review, please.
Our public notice advises that there will be a public planning meeting at 5:00 PM on Monday, July 10th, regarding proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw pertaining to lands at 107 and 109 Edgewater Drive. The owner of the properties would like to have the zoning of the lots changed from residential to multi-residential to allow for a fourplex building on these currently vacant lots. Public notice forms part of the agenda for tonight's meeting and can be found on the city website and on our Facebook page.
Excellent. Thank you. We have no committee and board reports from members of council this evening. So we will go straight into staff reports. And I would like to ask Mr. Pollard to present his staff report.
Madam Chair, I'd like to bring forward waste and recycling collection routes. I'd like to switch that up to a four day operation instead of a five to be a little bit more cost effective. We have a lot of sad holidays that follow on a Monday, so I'd like to go to a Tuesday, Friday. And also gives that truck a day at the shop there to get some fleet attention. We would start that at the first of August, and we would do a one month go back and pick up if we missed. So everybody gets it. We do a month ahead of time education and stuff like that. So just looking for some approval. Questions?
Any questions from councillors? Mayor Harrison, go ahead.
Through the chairs. So the recycle collection is starting by a different company in in July first day. So they're good with this change as well to four day week?
Yes, they are starting August first. It's a local company, and I've worked with them on the maps and the roots.
Any other thoughts? I mean, when I I looked at the report and I saw everything, I was like, this makes a lot of sense. So I I see no problem with us bringing it forward. Councillor McKinnon, go ahead.
I support the change.
We can bring it to. Go ahead, councillor Noel.
I'm in support as well.
Yes, so we will put it on the agenda for the twenty sixth. Thank you. Okay, so next up, I would like to ask Ms. Gould to present her staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, council. So I'm bringing forward three city policies that require just a little bit of updating. Didn't have major changes to them, but more clarification of anything. The first one is H R H S twenty four, personal protective equipment. I'd also like to say all three policies I had reviewed, we started an operational manager steering committee this year, actually probably late last year. And all three policies were reviewed by that committee, just to ensure that it works across the organization. And also, one of our Ministry of Labor representatives reviewed the P P E policy as well, just to ensure that we're compliant. So for the P P E policy, some of the major differences was clarifying that we're going to be following the C S A standard. So there is the Occupational Health and Safety Act, which lays out the standard. And then the C S A standard is in conjunction with that. So it just adds that extra level of safety. It's easy for us to select P P E just to ensure that we're acquiring the best protective equipment for our employees. Another change that we had was to have a higher ankle for our boots, just to try to minimize any type of ankle injuries when working on the field and things like that. For the workplace inspections, again, not too much for changes. However, we did have to add in a health and safety representative. So I put in some clarification. We require a joint health safety committee when a workplace, and that is a specific building, not necessarily our whole organization. So as you can imagine, we have multiple workplaces. So when a workplace has twenty plus employees, we require a joint health safety committee. And when there is six to nineteen, we only require a health and safety representative. They really do have the same hours, we could say. But a joint health safety committee requires one manager and one worker chair, whereas a health and safety representative is just one worker on their own. I've also added clarification on when management has to respond to any recommendations by either the J H S E or the health and safety rep, which is twenty eight days as per the Ontario regs. And then just further clarification on when they are doing the workplace inspection, that they do have the ability to correct hazards. And the reason why I thought that was important is because a worker has the ability when they see a supervisor, if something's wrong with the P P E or whatever task is going on and they identify it as a hazard, they have the ability to change that right then and there, just to ensure the safety of all workers. And lastly, we updated the working alone policy. I actually used the policy from the city of Toronto as a template. Big, big organization with a lot of areas to worry about. So I thought it was a really good guide. It was a very simple policy. Essentially, it requires us to do a job hazard assessment for all of our working alone tasks, which I believe we've done with that operational manager committee. And for tasks that are high risks, obviously, we'd not be working alone. But for ones that are medium risk, it just requires that the manager and the workers have a conversation just to ensure check in times, having code words, et cetera, things like that, just to, again, ensure everybody's safety. Any questions on any of the policies or comments from council?
Mayor Harrison, go ahead.
Oh, very good. I enjoyed looking through the policy. Support it. I just want to comment on the working law. It's good to see a working law policy. Not don't see all organizations. I think it's very important, especially the job hazard assessment. Ensure that people know what they're doing and the hazards that may arise. So good work.
Great. I don't think there are any further questions. This looks good to me. We can bring it to the twenty sixth. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, on to the next couple. I would like to ask Ms. Skilin to present her staff reports.
So, Madam Chair and Council, good evening. So my first staff report, it's the first of two staff reports this evening. So the first report is regarding five twenty Government Street. The applicant is McDonald's Restaurants of Canada, and the applicant has submitted plans and reports, has signed the agreement attached, and submitted their value of security for forty three thousand dollars. The proposed development involves a change in the footprint of the existing restaurant. And as you can see on the plan here, involves a change in the footprint of the existing existing restaurant by adding approximately thirteen hundred square feet in three additions to accommodate more space, both for the public as well as for their operations. With the exception of a remodeled front yard and adjustments to refuse storage and addition of designated loading zone, the general layout of the site will remain the same. New asphalting, painting of lines, some landscaping adjustments will be made to also refresh the property. The application was circulated through the site plan review committee and is approved as shown. Do you want to show the elevation? So in addition to obviously the interior and the additions, they're proposing the full facade change to the to the building as well. Fairly straightforward, very minimalistic in site plan changes, but I'm open for any questions if council has on this project.
Questions from councillors? Are you seeing none? Bring it to the twenty sixth. Yeehaw. Keep going.
Right, the second report. So this staff report is regarding the proposed development of Lot One at one seventy five Cecil Avenue of a twenty four unit seniors apartment building by Hillside Estates Dryden. The development has taken has taken part in the full planning process. In January of this year, the property was purchased privately on the condition of an approved severance. The application, the applicant submitted the application to the city, and consent to sever was approved by the Committee of Adjustment in April. Subsequently, an application to amend the zoning by law was submitted, reviewed, and brought before council, and the public at a legislative public meeting in May. Through the public meeting, concerns and questions were asked by the public in attendance regarding aspects of the proposed plan. A recommendation report was provided to council with the concerns being addressed, and council approved the zoning amendment on May twenty third. As most of the concerns brought forward at the zoning meeting were regarding site plan considerations, these comments and questions were conveyed to the applicant, and changes were made to mitigate them through the site plan control process. Following were discussed and plans amended accordingly. The developer has altered the plans to show the widened roadway developed to ensure proper two way traffic flow and installation of curbing and surfacing to city standards. Through the city's traffic committee installation and discussion of stop signs at the intersection of Second and Myrtle and mitigation of traffic at the laneway will be discussed, as this is not an applicant responsibility. The developer has noted and included in the landscape plan a continual buffer of evergreen shubs along the western and southern lot lines to mitigate any sound and light transmission. Parking is oriented east to west, which will lessen the impact of headlights from parked cars to the residential properties to the south. In addition to the above, the site plan review group, consisting of building and planning, public works, and fire services, have reviewed and generally approved the plan as presented. Civil engineering, stormwater management, zoning compliance, among other aspects, were also reviewed through this process. The value of security was determined at a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars and is in process and will be accepted as a condition of approval of the agreement presented here tonight and as required prior to any building permit issuance. Again, I'm open for discussions or questions that anybody might have on this site plan control application.
Questions? Oh, go ahead, Mayor Harrison.
Thank you. Through the chair, just thank you for bringing this to council and to seems appears that everything's been addressed, some of the concerns or especially around the traffic. So good to see that the response of the applicant as well of our city. Thank you.
I was just going to echo that as well. I just wanted to pass on the thanks to the Hillside Estates Dryden for taking all of the concerns from the public very seriously. So that's great, and we can bring it to the twenty sixth. Great, let's do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last but not least of the staff reports, I would like to ask Mr. Lansdale Rule to please present his staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, council, staff and public. My first staff report relates to the N W M O twenty twenty three Community Wellbeing Programme funding. The recommendation is that council approves the utilization of up to twenty thousand in N W M O Community Wellbeing Programme funding for the twenty twenty three Dog Park Fencing Capital Project. A little bit of the background, our twenty twenty three approved capital plan has a project for the Dog Park fencing with a budget of forty five thousand with fully funded by external sources. But Mr. Belangi can probably attest that the the successfulness of our external funding didn't come to fruition. So the Ontario Trillium Foundation didn't approve our application. And the Dryden Trailblazer Tourism Association did provide some funding for the project, but not what we had hoped. In the end, we're short just under twenty thousand dollars. And with the city receiving a hundred and fifty thousand in community wellbeing funding from the N W M O, we feel that the this project aligns well with one of their deliverables. So we're looking for council approval. I'm putting Alison kind of on the spot here. So maybe if council's supportive of this, we could have a resolution at council meeting that we could then share with the N W M O folks. But if there are any questions, I can take them.
Questions from anyone? Okay, hearing none, so we can bring it to the twenty sixth.
Thank you. My next my next staff report is an amendment to the twenty twenty three budget. So if council recalls in my year twenty twenty two year in financial report, we anticipated a deficit, an operating deficit, and and that actually came to fruition. There was no changes from the dollar value that we presented in the year in financial report. But basically, the municipal act states that any prior year surplus becomes a revenue source in the next fiscal year, and any prior year deficit becomes an expense, and we have a balanced budget. So this deficit, we need to fund. We have a surplus and deficit policy that operating surpluses go go into certain reserves. And the the thought process of the plan would be that we would have appropriate reserve balances in our general operating reserve that would would be able to fund this operating deficit. However, with the transition to the O P P, we had to utilize some of the reserve funds in our operating reserve. So we're not able to we're not able to fund this four hundred and twenty thousand dollar operating deficit out of that reserve. However, our police contract with the O P P is going to be lower than originally budgeted based on a revised policing cost estimate that we received at the end of March of this year. So fortunately, we're not having to go back and revisit our tax levy or look at our other expenses and look at a potential cost cutting exercise between the operating surplus and the reduced O P P policing contract. We're able to fully fund the four hundred and twenty thousand dollar operating deficit from twenty twenty two. So there's a little bit of a required budget adjustment there that I've that I've outlined in the staff report. The other the other budget amendment being proposed is a change to our capital plan. So existing in our current approved capital plan for twenty twenty three is hot mix patching extended meters. That's just under a hundred eighty thousand dollar budget. Also, in our operating budget, we have two hundred and twenty thousand for hot mix patching. This would be for smaller sections. The the capital would be for asset sections, and the hot mix patching would be greater than fifty percent of that asset. The the operating ones would be below the fifty percent. So public work staff, they received a quote for the twenty twenty three roadways that required hot mix patching. That was the combination of our operating assets or sections as well as the capital sections. And based on that quote, we're able to accommodate all but one of the capital sections within within that quote. So what we're recommending, the amendment being, is that we increase this capital hot mix patching project by two hundred and eighty thousand dollars so that we can do all of these high priority sections of the roadway. Blake may be able to speak more to the to the section, but it would be the Davis Street Van Horn Avenue high priority section of the roadway that we would be adding and being able to complete in twenty twenty three. We're also proposing that it would not impact our capital requirements out of operations because we have just over eight hundred thousand in Canada Community Building Fund funds that have not been allocated. So we're proposing using two hundred and eighty thousand of those funds, which would still leave over five hundred thousand dollars remaining for future capital projects. If we don't complete this work, then it's going to probably have to be done in twenty twenty four, which then would defer another high priority section of the roadway in twenty twenty four. And it just basically puts us further behind what we need to be doing. So I'm hopeful that council supports this amendment, realizing that it's not going to cost the taxpayers anymore dollars. And we're utilizing the C C B F funds for an eligible project under the criteria of that program. So again, I'll open it up to any questions on the operating side or the capital side.
Any questions immediately arising from folks? I have a question. The C C B F funding, is there anything that is currently like that the money is already earmarked for? Or is that is this money that we have earmarked for surprises?
I would, sorry, through the chair, I wouldn't say surprises, but future capital projects. So we're this this funding would have been deferred into next year, and and it could go towards another eligible project. Under the the C C B F program, I think there's seventeen different criteria criteria, but areas that you can expend the money. Airports, rec facilities, roadways, water and sewer assets, storm sewer assets, things of that nature. So what would happen is is we would defer that and and basically be able to do a project in twenty twenty four. But the hope is that council supports utilizing a little bit of those dollars so that we can get a a major section of the roadway in a, I guess, a better condition. But maybe Blake can maybe Blake can speak to the the section so that council can get a an appreciation for for the that added work. But maybe Blake can maybe Blake can speak to the the section so that council can get a an appreciation for for the that added work.
I can give you a quick update on that. The section we're going to do is a portion of Van Horn there. Like you said, it's almost two blocks. We're doing tying into where we ended three years ago now, around Davis Street. It's pretty rough through that section through there, so and we're pothole patching there quite often, and the street is quite wide there too as well, so it is a fair amount of asphalt to put back there. There's a from on Memorial Avenue from Arthur Street to Duke Street, we're going to do that section. That does need some repair. I realize the rest of Memorial has sections as well there that really could use work, but we have to do underground work there and budget for underground work before we repave that section, so look forward to that project coming to you shortly. And as well, there's a block of cashmere that we replaced, all the curbs and the sidewalk was replaced, but unfortunately, we didn't have the funds to pave it last year, so we're going to do a block of that as well. And then there's a number of patches we're going to do on, I think it's Weisshurst as well as is it Arthur Street? That old one? Yeah, that's and Weiss, yeah. And that's and those are just going to be smaller patches, but at least getting rid of any dips and bumps and any other road deteriorating in those areas.
Sounds good. Oh, councillor Latham, go ahead.
Yeah, Blake, I think it's a good good thing to do, so I support it. Got to keep our streets up and to some kind of standard, so. Thank you.
Excellent. So seeing no other comments, let's bring it to the twenty-sixth. All right, you're on a roll.
All right, my last staff report is the twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three tax ratios and and tax levies. The recommendation is that council receives as information the twenty-twenty-three tax levy details outlining the tax revenue generated by property class, and that council approves the tax bylaws for twenty-twenty-three that correspond to the twenty-twenty-three tax levy details provided. So council adopted the twenty-twenty-three budget with a tax levy requirement of approximately fifteen point one three million, which corresponded with a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar levy increase. We adopt our tax rates for twenty-twenty-three in the province. Basically establishes the education rates each year. A levy bylaw is required to authorize staff to bill and collect property taxes. So we need to get this done before the end of July, really, so that we can issue our final or tax bills at the beginning of August. Just a little bit of discussion. There are mandatory property classes, and then you have some basically optional classes. For the city of Dryden, our only optional class is the large industrial class. I also wanted to highlight the continue to highlight the new multi-res class, and basically, it's any property that is built after the regulation was or the new regulation was passed in twenty-seventeen. So if it's a multi-res property built in our community after that date in twenty-seventeen, it would be put into this class, and it would remain in that class for thirty-five years, and then just and then go into the normal multi-res class. This new council adopted at the time a tax ratio of one point one. Basically, the the regulation stipulated that councils council had to choose a tax ratio between one and one point one, and council of the day chose one point one. With regards to our tax ratios, our tax ratios are basically the same as they were last year. However, with our industrial broad industrial class being restricted from a levy increase perspective, the mechanism for our three hundred and ninety thousand levy increase results in the industrial and large industrial tax ratios coming down slightly. But the net the net impact is the three hundred and ninety thousand dollar levy increase and our fifteen point one three million dollar total levy. There is, it's somewhat confusing, and in my staff report, I speak to the the thresholds and the range of fairness. But basically, for our industrial broad class, our current ratio is four point eight seven. The threshold is two point six three. So if we're above that two point six three, we're levy restricted, so any levy increases, the max you can apply to the industrial class is fifty percent of the levy. As a result, the other classes have to basically accommodate a larger amount of that increase. It's one of the complexities of the tax system in Ontario. Are there any questions regarding our our tax bylaws?
I feel like I have a million, but I don't know how to put them into words, but I will try and send you an email at some point this week after I read your report for the fourth time. Any thoughts from anyone here? Oh, Mayor Harrison, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Yes, thank you, Ms. Lansdale-Rule, just for documentation. Yeah, it's a bit complex, and thanks for informing the council about some of the complexity of it, helping us understand just the rates and especially where the fairness values, the range, and explaining the large industrial docs where we are. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nothing else, we will bring it to the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have one notice of motion this evening, which I will ask the clerk to review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor Noel has submitted a notice of motion that'll appear as a motion on the agenda of the June twenty-sixth council meeting. The notice pertains to the city's flag policy and reads that Dryden council passed this motion to amend our flag policy to read that any O P P officer who dies while in the line of duty will be recognized by the city of Dryden by having the flags at municipal buildings lowered to half mast. And as I said, that'll be up for discussion on the twenty-sixth.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, next are announcements. Do any councillors or mayor have any comments or anything? I guess we'll start, I'll start over here.
Yes, thank you through the chair. It's a busy month and probably lots of announcements. I'll just limit to a couple. We did proclaim seniors month, so I just want to recognize the seniors in our community. It's the contribution they've made to make our community a great place. So if you don't have a senior life, you should get to know one and spend some time with them and thank them for the work that they've done in contributing to our community. Also, National Indigenous History Month is just really a great opportunity to to learn about the unique cultures and traditions and experiences of First Nations in Ute and Métis. It's it's really a time to honor their stories, their achievements, and resilience of indigenous people who have lived in this land for such a long time. So announced, the library does have a display at the on Indigenous material, so I encourage you to attend there to visit, as well as our museum is hosting an exhibit on the traditional foods of the Lake of the Woods and Nishnabi entitled Nijim. I don't know if I got that right, but I'll learn it on tomorrow. It's the grand opening, and Les Gardner from Wabeguijibwe Lake Nation will be opening the exhibit, so you're all welcome to attend there. So all we got is some on the Indigenous front, we've got a couple of big celebrations this year in Dryden. On June twentieth, Dryden Council Treaty Three is inviting us to celebrate the hundred and fiftieth hundred and fiftieth anniversary, the signing of Treaty Three. This is a very special occasion, and they have set out celebrations throughout our region, throughout Treaty Three, and we'll be one of the first ones. East and Dryden. There'll be various locations, but the center will be the main venue for the celebration of June twentieth. Everyone is welcome then. As well as the next day, our National Indigenous Peoples' Day, and all the celebrations will mostly be at the arena. And celebrations there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councillor Latham. Councillor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's it's always good to recognize the achievements of those who were born and raised here, and I'd like to recognize the achievements of both Kevin Wright and Brian Bates, who in May of this year were inducted into Manitoba Softball Hall of Fame. Kevin is a cat catcher, Brian is a coach. They were part of a nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-five Legion team that that captured many Manitoba championships, so it's always good to hear where former residents have done something special in their life. So I'm just congratulating them for that. Secondly, I'd back up with the mayor said on on the seniors seniors month. There's lots of lots of folks out there that are lonely. Sometimes all they need is a conversation. And I know I know all city employees are really good at dealing with them, so doesn't hurt to spend a few minutes with those folks and and bring some some cheer into their lives, so remember that when you see them. Thank you.
I'll go next. June is also, the city recently proclaimed it Pride Month, and our local pride groups and other organizations across Dryden are hosting events throughout the month. I spent the majority of my day volunteering at the Friendship Center's Pride barbecue today, and it was very warm, but also wonderful. They had over six hundred people come through, and it was wonderful and well-attended and just a really lovely time. Dryden is celebrating its pride on June twenty-fourth. That's a Saturday. Everyone is invited, of course, and we'd love to see you out there. And absolutely, please come to the Grand Council Treaty Three one hundred and fiftieth anniversary events. I'll see you at the pancake breakfast if anyone is also going, and yeah, I think that's, I think that's all I have. Councillor Noel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too echo Mayor Harrison and Councillor McKinnon's comments on the seniors. I think it's very important that we recognize the contributions that they've made. They're the reasons we're all sitting here today. They built this place. They built that hospital. We need to recognize that. The other thing I'd like to mention is the Maxo Powerlifting Challenge that was held at the Dryden Arena this weekend. And what a fantastic job, because I've been to some of the sanctioned events that the volunteers did. It was over the top, and the facility, Mr. Belonge, was fabulous. Really was, even even in the stage of construction it was in. It was absolutely wonderful, and I see big things for that event next year that was very well-attended, and I was shocked to see, I learned a lot there. I didn't know there was that many female powerlifters in the world, and they kind of stole the show there, actually. So, yeah, it was very, very good.
I know our our very own Ms. Gould was one of the lifters and like made a few new personal records, so snaps to that. And councillor Price, go ahead.
Yes, just a couple of announcements. So on the fifteenth of June, I would encourage business owners, managers, or representatives to attend the upcoming meeting with the O P P as well as council members as well to discuss any concerns and any feedback that you would like to give to the O P P on the service that they're providing. That's at the center on June the fifteenth at six P M. Darrell had mentioned the new routes for recycling. I've been in contact with Jessica, I can't remember her last name, I think it's Wild, with Circular Materials. They will be attending the Days of Summer on downtown on August the seventeenth with activities and to provide information, so they're going to have a a sizable booth down there, so look for that. A big thank you goes out to the, now if I get this straight, the Trillium Lions Club or the Lion Trilliums Club, Schmidt's Greenhouse, especially Holly Schmidt, the D T T A, and Darrell and Trevor from Public Works for working with me to get the flowers planted in the downtown core as well as the tourist center and the highway. If you haven't checked out that, both, I think there were eight planters downtown, and then the two large ones at at the tourist center were completely cleaned out and all new flowers going in, and without the help of especially Public Works, they literally ripped out every single juniper bush, because I hate them. And so they they did the work and and his crew of girls that worked with me, the one one day I was very, very pleased with the work that they did for us in order to get the ground ready for for flowers and and D T T A also for the funding of that that project. So thank you for that, and if you haven't seen it, go down, take a look. It was it it actually turned out quite quite nice. And finally, I'm sure everyone knows Casey from Casey's Clothes Closet. He is closing, I believe, his last day is the fifteenth. I'm not absolutely sure, but I know it's this month, and I was talking to Casey last week, and he was in business for thirty-seven years. So I'm jealous that you're retiring. I'm sad because you're always a good good for a conversation if you have two hours to, you know, waste and and go in and talk to Casey. He's always there, and he kept my husband well-dressed for many, many years, so congratulations on your retirement, Casey. We're sure going to miss you downtown, and so if you're out and about and you see him, give him a pat on the back or a good handshake, because he is deserving of that. So thank you.
Oh, we had good announcements today. This is great. Okay, that's great. Madam Clerk, can you please ask someone to move and second the motion so to adjourn?
Okay, I've got councillor Noel and councillor Price over here.
All in all in favor to? No, don't do it. No. Okay.
Just give me something to do. Moved by councillor Noel, seconded by councillor Price that this meeting be declared adjourned.
Thank you. Four minutes early. Oh, yeah, all in favor? I jumped the gun on it. I was too excited. Okay, carried. The meeting stands adjourned. Please turn off your mics.